Monday, November fourth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M. The Gackel City Council. Everyone had a chance to look at minutes for previous meeting. Any questions, additions, corrections? If not, we'll take a motion to approve them.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second, Matt.
All in favor? And tonight's agenda. For new business, we need to add tractor. The rate study. And then also buying some city property back. Anyone else have anything to add to that?
The other property down here for that house in the corner.
Oh, yes, I read.
Or that land and lot in the corner.
Okay, any other additions you guys know? If not, we'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'm gonna make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we don't have any visitors tonight. We'll go ahead and read into Bill. What do you got for city maintenance?
Um, for the state was here. We got them three spots paved. I didn't have them pave that one where the water break was. Just because if we're gonna replace that line, there's no sense in paving that. So right now I'm just gravel. Got a few spots there. The State Department did the one on Main Street. They always been in charge of that, so I don't. Should be down the road from the state every day now. City pickup. Um, we got an estimate from Jeff Clunt. To get the hood and stuff, fix headlights. There are no high beams on that thing right now. Which we probably do. So this is a rough estimate. He said it's could go off some just because he doesn't know what's inside as far as brackets and stuff like that that could be broke. If someone needed help, I would go help them whenever they need to help with.
Okay, that's pretty impressive.
And he didn't order nothing yet. If you kind of go through there, he said order some place from G M and carparts dot com or something and some other places.
Which is a hook I didn't notice. That would find a useful.
The hood was what, five hundred?
It's about half that. That was the big one, weren't you?
And I just got that today.
And he's gonna go it's here. What a guy.
If, if you guys want to go through with it. So Larry was looking at one in South Dakota somewhere, but that guy didn't matter.
A hood or just?
A whole front clipper.
Oh, okay.
And it pissed me off. After six months, you can't give me an answer?
Do I remember?
I'll make that motion to go ahead and do that. What do you guys think? I'll second. For the price of the vehicle and for what it's doing.
It's not that actually came in less than what I thought it would be.
Okay, all in favor?
Dumpsters, we got two dumpsters in town that need replacing badly. One at the care center. We replaced one there last year, I believe it was. The other one involved problems where it fall out with.
You don't have any extras?
No, not a four yarder. And then Dakota Valley, there's another one that's starting to.
Megan, Megan you do?
Huh? Four yarder? No, that's just a two yarder up there. Uh, the two yarders are eight thirty-three and the four yarders are just over a thousand. I don't know if that's something. Cause that one at the care center, if that guy scrolls down, the bodies come out of it.
Okay.
And I talked to. What's her name? Uh, Bonnie.
Kim?
Kim. And I asked her if possible to put a slab there and she just wasn't so sure if it was in the budget. And it's not their property. Where the dumpster is sitting.
Where are they sitting? Is something?
Right by Dean's shop.
On Dean's property.
Yeah, right across the alley to the east.
Oh, that is there, okay. Exactly which I had almost there, okay.
Cause these ones don't have wheels on them. They got two inches. Two by four, put a glue on them. They just stick right on the balance.
Probably too late for this winter, but I wonder if they could find a spot. You know, that church property, what used to be the church.
Well, that's what the janitor now and I were over there and talked a little bit and we would do it on the south side of, it'd be like on the south side of that. That a lot of that shit that they got there now. We'd kind of opt to the south side of that, but right off the alley.
And you go back in or?
Lower, just drive in and back in. And then they'd have to set an angle for us to get down.
Still like pad?
Oh, for sure pad, yes. So they just brush off. I'm on a, I'm on a top ground too to see if they still have a slab. They get stuck in the mud, we get filled with mud and trying bars, trying to break them loose and it's not the best of times.
You know, I wonder if for this winter. I mean, it's too late to try to get cement poured now or get somebody. I wonder if a guy, I think there's some up at the shop, get those two foot by two foot concrete pads. If the guy just got a couple of them, I can't remember what I paid for them. They weren't that expensive.
Or some random guys or something.
Ten dollars a piece. If the guy got a couple just to have set on them, that was.
I wouldn't say the two yarder would be fine, but I would say the four yarder that would probably bust them. You know, if they're not sitting perfectly level, you know, if they come down on it and you know, they don't like, the things can't really fit it too much. The two yarder might be fine, but the one at the care center, that one gets heavy. Cause that's the main one that they use.
Which ones have been replaced last year? I thought we.
We replaced one at the care center.
Just one? I thought we had a bunch of them.
Yeah, we did. No, it was like.
Some other ones?
Laura had one, they had one, the alley has got a new one.
Okay, so we did go through with that then?
Yeah, the toll cottage has got a new one.
First thing we need to do and to get new ones is drill holes in the bottom of them.
They have holes.
Do they?
They do, but they.
They still follow shit?
The water goes away from the hole. It goes into the corners.
I suppose. What you got to do on that?
I mean, we could drill a hole too, I guess, but then you're kind of, you're taking the paint and stuff off of where the.
Just a standing water and sanding dumpsters that don't take long.
Bill, would you guys just stop? Do you want to replace a few again this year?
What are they?
New. A two yarder is eight thirty-three and a four yarder is just over a thousand.
What do you think of two of them?
Just one of each.
I mean, Dakota Valley, that one might, I shouldn't say, that one should last over any of the, if you want to hold off on that one, but that care center one is bad.
You mean you don't have any left over?
No, I mean. I do, but it's not, they wouldn't be big enough for them.
I see. Cause I'm gonna ask you to pick up that one at the apartments. Can people fill?
Boy, yeah, I'm falling out.
You guys could do that, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Pick up what? The dumpster at the care center, cause people keep using it.
At the apartments?
That's what I meant. They have apartments.
Yeah, we'll take them there.
Probably next month. That way we get through our B and B and stuff like that.
Oh, you guys want to do on that?
Okay.
Larry's okay with. If we need him, I guess get him where we have a mess, but.
The bomb's falling out. It's gonna fall out.
It's on us to buy new ones, it's not on you. Is that the?
Well, what I understand is the city buys them and they rent them.
They rent them out.
Is that how that works?
Yeah, yeah, the big ones are twenty-nine. The bigger ones are twenty, twenty-nine, the other one's twenty-five.
That's, that's not.
Yeah, I've done that.
If that property tax things goes through, we're gonna probably have to look on raises and stuff.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to get a four or two.
One of each?
One of each or just puts the one is fine too. I'm more concerned about the care center one that.
Whatever you need.
Lauren and Neil?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
If I go to business market, I'll pick them up then. I'll give you one of call the hips or they have.
They, I follow them, they have my hand. Um, they all got broke. Ran into two problems with the pitch doors along the edges were all ratted out. They fixed all that stuff for us. Get the water turned off at the longer ramp and pull them three meters out of there. Well, then three meters we can put in somewhere. And then went to Ron's Rose today and had Brett from down there. We kind of had to do a little re-polling in there. So I told him to send to the city, the bill to the city.
Re-polling where?
At Ron's Rose. The meter was stuck in kind of behind and there was no way arguably we're gonna go fit that there. Alright, so all you got.
All in? There you go.
Okay, I, we do need to add one more thing. I forgot this one. Kevin said he went and gravel, I mean, did these roads again. He's really gotta dig down to find gravel, so we really need to get some gravel on the the roads cause they're bad and need the gravel.
These two spots over here?
What, what?
Both of them?
I wonder if you think it pays this late in the year?
I don't know, we could ask him. We could ask him, but I know he just redid them, he just did them last, this past week and he said, boy, it's, there's nothing really left for gravel.
And the reason I say that, a lot of times I know like on the township. Boy, that late graveling in the first, then it was all kind of loose. First snow, it would get into the gravel and when the lake came along, it all ended up in the ditch. And if you did it in the spring or early summer. The moisture would pack it in and it held, otherwise it just doesn't hold.
So I'll tell him to remind us when the winter ends?
That's what I would say. I think we should just wait till spring. But I agree, maybe not gravel, but wait till spring. So it gets a chance to pack in.
Yeah, there's a lot of rules that are having a same issue right now. And they're all waiting, so from what I've heard.
Yeah. And then the rate study, did you want to explain to them or you want me to?
Uh, no, go ahead. We can address that.
Right, the rate study, we got fifty-three people that sent them back. In order for us to send it on to the next phase, we need at least eighty-eight people. So he wants me to send out a second thing to the people who did not fill it out. And then from there, then I'll go see people door to door. See, but he said we should have a second mailing. So I'll go ahead and get that taken care of. But we did have fifty-three people return. So I will send them out again.
Cause how many, how many did you send out total?
One or two. We, you don't send out to any of the businesses. You don't, they have to live here at least six months out of the year. So no seasonal people got them. And if you weren't in the city limits, you didn't get it.
Throw a long ways off then?
Not a lot, I mean.
Half of them?
Thirty. Well, yeah, we look at how many we sent out, yeah. So I will send those out again?
Well, all we can do is try again and express how important it is right now.
Well, I'm gonna send a letter saying that and then we'll wait a little bit for that comeback and then I'll go door to door with them and talk to them, explain to them, this is so that we can get grants.
So you'd have a list of who did not respond?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, this is a list of who did respond, so now I'll compare it to my one that I sent out to and then send it. I won't resend it to everybody. I'll just send it to the ones that did not respond.
Okay, that's all we can do, I guess. Okay, anything else? Okay, grants out here. Jeff, do you got anything? Okay, uh, Larry, you got anything?
Nope.
Lauren, you got anything? Uh, old business permit for Joel's Incr' Driveways done. Gaming permit for Ducks Unlimited. Old church property, that one we got done with. Getting ready for winter rolls, cleanup campers, jet skis, trailers.
That worked out really well. Every single person did them. The only one was, did Tom get his boat off now? He was the only one left, last.
I'm sure.
Yeah, his was the only one I had left.
Well, good. He'll get it off.
I haven't driven by Markham's in a while. What's that look like?
I'm asking.
Pick up setting with a cherry picker in front of it. I don't know, is he lifting the engine now?
The engine's alright.
Yeah, I think the engine's closed. He was pulling against last night, I heard. And now he said he's got a cracked block, so I.
So there's more junk in front of there is what we're saying?
Yeah, some of the street too.
It's on the street?
Well, we better get something done there, cause if we're sending letters to everyone else for boats and everything that they've been using all year, I think it's rape.
You know, actually, you know, it does.
It's got a running vehicle, registered running vehicle.
It does disallow service on the street. That is in the ordinance.
Yeah, you can't service your vehicle on the street, so you're saying, right.
So if he's got a, um, when I see the cherry picker, I don't know. I didn't drive either today, but no cherry picker.
It was there yesterday.
Well, what's your guys' recommendation? Cause I get people every month coming up to me and I, I think we're putting it off a little too much here. Getting hard on the people that.
Is there a fine or something we can assess to this?
There's gotta be.
I think you can give.
It's time.
Last year you did a, um, you gave him two weeks to get it off the street, which he's already gotten for the trailer and stuff, two weeks. I gave him notice for that. Um, and then you had a fine of five hundred dollars. And if you got off the road before, within the next two weeks, then we forgave the five hundred dollar fine. That's what we did last year with campers and everything. We are not here, everybody has to remember that.
Well, I, that's what I'm saying, we, we.
So we sent out a, this is last month, so.
I think it's Tuesday night.
And so if they're still not in compliance this month, we can find, we can probably send a sheriff over, right?
And send it up, and what Zimmerman told him last year, don't start at fifty dollars cause people don't care, they'll pay it. We did, did five hundred dollar fines and forgave it if you would move to sell.
It's time.
But I think we should, and actually should turn it over to the officers. That's why we pay a judge, the municipal judge.
Okay, I just talked to him about three days ago and he says, uh, you all look too quiet down there. Why don't y'all, don't, don't y'all want to put me to work?
So will he give, hold you to the sheriff department and offer that or do we need to do, what do we need to do?
I call him, Hannah, I will call him and he will do something and then we get the sheriff to.
Well, let's get that going.
I, alright, I'll need the ordinance. I call Hannah, he writes up a document for the, for them to take care of that with them and then we set it to court date.
Okay, I say that we've given them enough time.
Yeah, a lot of time.
Everyone else we're hard on, that's got usable campers just sitting there with boats or whatever. I don't think it's right. And I don't, if we're looking through, we should go through with everything up to the sidewalk and nuisance and all that, we may as well.
Remember reading what's in here.
The guy's slick though, giving that. He cleans up one side and it looks good. All of a sudden a bunch more comes in. I don't understand it, but.
Sure, okay.
So we can move on and all this?
Yeah.
We take a motion to get that for him?
I'll make him.
Should I make him?
I don't know if we need to. I guess it's ordinance rate?
Yeah, I'll just get, I'll just, I'll just.
It's in there, I know it is.
If you can give that to me and then I'll call the judge.
Shouldn't say get it going, get it going again, so we don't. Anyway, okay. Okay, so that's off the road. We discussed that. Uh, new business, uh, rear tires for the city tractor.
What's the damage on that?
There's no lugs left on it. They're completely worn out or wore down, I should say.
Have you ever thought about putting something other than a traction tire?
That's what Bill and I talked about it. And if I can pull it up here.
It's got dirt tire or something or what would you?
Well, you get a tire like the table, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're expensive, but. But there are some cheaper tires.
Okay, I called, first I called, um. Northwest Tire. And then this morning I thought I should call them and pull it in. You know, they can do this area changing tire, tractor tires. And there's three options. And there'd be a tire, well, this would be one.
Like the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Shit, I didn't bring the price.
What, what were they?
This one was, I think, this is the cheapest one. I forget what brand it was.
Sixteen hundred or something like that.
Sixteen something. This one was, um.
One oh one?
Twenty-one something. And this one was twenty-four hundred. This one's psyched.
That makes a huge difference on that, that loader.
It's cool down.
Or you make a custom tire or grab the.
What you're looking at is the most expensive. It's psyched.
Or a groove.
Well, how are we gonna work that? If we replace just the back tires, would we have to replace the front tires to get full of that?
Northwest Tire said it don't make any difference.
Didn't we just put the front tires on there?
Yeah.
I thought so.
And the guy at Napoleon said, yeah, cause you're on a pavement, if you're running on pavement all the time, you're running the, just on the lug.
Right.
And that's what's chewing them away.
Now, those cheaper tires, uh, as far as, uh, wear, did they see anything about whether they're gonna be more wear or less wear than them expensive?
I don't know. He, I don't think he has had a lot of experience with it in here.
But you're talking five hundred bucks from the cheap to the, to the most expensive?
Yeah.
And around that, so a thousand bucks for better tires that are psyched?
Yeah.
Sides, you're gonna leave wear a little better than.
Yeah, we'd better, I'll spend even more money if we got a tire that's gonna break, gonna wear better.
That's, that's.
And here's the tire that Northwest Tire pulled it. But I don't know if it's psyched or not.
And they're right there too, price wise?
Yeah, they're about twenty-two hundred.
Okay.
And I guess we could make it another month. I could do a little more research.
You need to get it coming.
The rest of the tires, look, it's just that luggage blown.
Question would be. How much life is left in the tractor? Are we, I mean, is this, must've been two grand, four grand or? Are we looking at replacing that in the next five years? I don't know.
That's a good question. I know a lot of time in Todd. That was about, what, a year ago? What did he work on?
Put a clutch in it?
No, that was, uh, thermostat was sticking.
The thermostat? He said there's a lot of life left on this engine.
Okay.
Cause we got what, about five thousand some hours on it?
So you got some, okay.
Anything major wrong with it now, other than the tires?
I don't know, the loader isn't in the best of shape, but there's a lot of cushions that are, well.
Yeah, the loader, this is separate from the tractor, so. Maybe we're just looking at replacing the loader, replacing the whole tractor.
I had no clue what, or.
So other than that, it runs just fine.
Doesn't use any oil, I don't think at all.
Is it in our budget, putting tires on it?
I mean, it's not in the budget, but I mean, we have the money for it, we'll put it that
Well, I don't know if it's gonna do us any good if we get any snow.
Well, that's just it, you know what, what kind of, it has to be done. There's things that we can get by with, but tire, no tires on a, a main, principal, snow removal. That ain't gonna fly. I'll make that motion to put new tires on it if we need to. I'll second that.
Okay, you guys want the, obviously you're talking about.
Twenty-two hundred dollar psyched tire.
Larry second? All in favor?
We'll do some more checking in case there is a hang up.
Find us, find us a good tire that's gonna wear nice.
Alright, uh, last month, we sold that old property, or the old church property over here. And that same guy, what was his name? Sorry?
Gary was close.
Jeff Shy was in here.
Yeah, just for Gary Holtz.
Now he said he would do the same thing, take orbit, take over everything, the way we set up this one. Pay for everything, get put in his name and the deed and all that on that corner property over by store base.
The buddy of his that's gonna buy, he's gonna also put up a barned vineyard type thing there.
What are we, what are we looking at?
Well, he said he would do the same thing with the same deal.
Okay.
Said I would bring it to you guys.
I understand. We'll bring her.
Okay, and we'll take a motion for that then?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I think that's a pretty stiff, um, assessment on that property down there in the corner. And two of that number, it's pretty, pretty. There's quite a bit of frontage. And it would be, um. Oh, shit. Look at this.
I'm gonna make sure when I call him back, I tell him that and I tell him what the
Well, it ain't doing us any good, so. If they're willing to put some infrastructure on that, that's just.
Well, the church, church one, he's putting the building up.
Yeah.
But he's also doing, um, upstairs with living quarters.
Right.
Because his house over there is booked solid for the area to, to, it's easy. So he wants to be able to go up there.
This is she?
This is Jeff Shire or the other guy?
Gary, it's the other guy. And now he's looking for a property for his other buddy.
Five oh four, two thousand.
Do you want to know it?
Got about four hundred and forty bucks a year for specials.
Sixty-five hundred?
I thought it was somewhere in sixty-five hundred. Give him that number.
Now what's the number on it?
Five oh four, two thousand.
Lauren's got it. You're the specials that are out there. Yeah, I'd have, if you guys are okay with.
Oh, absolutely.
Cause the next thing we gotta go through, um.
What is it? Five oh four, what?
Two thousand.
That's Andrew and Liz.
Yeah, it was.
My name was on there for some damn reason.
Yeah, I remember that.
I remember Joe Bardell way back when asked me if I owned that. I don't.
Yeah.
But I don't know why your name.
That, that property there is five four one oh five oh.
Which one else?
The one you're looking at is. The one you're looking at is right next to Drew's.
Is it marked on here?
So it would be five oh four, one zero, three zero. Drew, you are the forty-two hundred one. It is four one zero five zero.
Zero five, zero four, two thousand.
No, that's listed under Drew.
And what did you put it at?
I know it's listed on Drew, that's not right.
Well, that's what.
Drew is over here.
So am I getting what we sell it for then?
Well, then where is Drew's?
I'm okay with that.
Because Drew's was paying for that one.
Well, I'm not, it's on there wrong and they fixed it a while ago.
Yeah.
We had, uh.
Okay, yeah, Drew's right here.
Are you guys looking at the old one or the new one? We went through this once before.
What's, what's, what's Drew's number?
Drew's number is zero, zero five, zero four, two, zero, zero, zero.
Exactly the same number as that one.
So that's the old one?
That's on the old map. We went through this once before, find it over here, zero five, four.
I think I owe a little more than fifty bucks for it, guys, can you stand? Changed my mind.
One, two.
You picked up your assessment, you guys said you agreed to sell it, I didn't.
What is it, zero four, two thousand?
Four two, zero four, two thousand, yeah.
Zero four, two thousand, all right, the hero would be right here. And then that property, that other property's over here.
Same piece of cake with that one, isn't it?
Four one, zero, three, zero. Because last time you all were looking, if that's the map up here, that's the very first one, this is the newest one, right, Bill?
I have no idea.
So, we're gonna sell it for fifty bucks.
It's the same number.
In conviction notice, next, exact same number.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, then that's not down at that corner, is it?
I'm guessing this map is the same number. I remember.
Yeah, but the footage is way different.
Yeah, so it's the same number as Drew's house?
Because it's lots, one and two, vacated portion of Avenue thirty, forty, block three, zero.
Um, you're looking for, Lauren, you're looking for five, zero, four, one, zero, five, zero. That's the property that's, that wants to be sold.
You almost got you.
And that's Gap City, this, my book is right, zero, four, one, zero, five, zero. They've got, that still owed ten thousand dollars on that first street assessment.
I bet it did, it's a big piece of property.
And their yearly thing is seven sixty-six. You've got the old map, Lauren. So we went through that with Bardell at that time.
I know we had more engineer looking into it, so.
But you probably just pull that one off the wall.
Seven hundred and sixty bucks.
Seven sixty, it's seven sixty-six a year, so you want, so I'll have to let him know that. Gary did ride down there with me and looked at all, and said.
And what was that number again for that one that's in the corner?
Five zero four, one zero five zero. If we're going per sale here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one you gave me. Five zero four, one zero five zero. That's what you said.
Yeah, five zero four, one zero five zero. So this would be your newer map over here.
Well, why don't we get ahold of Lauren and have him send us out some, so we can, we don't have this confusion anymore?
Yeah.
I can't imagine. I would.
See, I think this is the old one up here too.
Okay.
I'll, I'll do that, I'll get.
Because that's the one Bardell kept using over here.
And then they could probably straighten out, deal with Idris Miller and.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Kyle Miller. That's been a mess.
Should I just have him call you then?
Or that, yeah.
That way I don't have to get in the middle of that one, because I don't know what's going on there. I mean, I know a little bit, but I don't know what they want on there, whatever, okay?
I don't know if we're gonna be on that.
Okay, yeah, that's a little bit I heard about. Okay, um, so we got that figured out in that corner lot, and we'll let him know what the specials are on that, or the assessment. And that was seconded and favored, in favor we got of that, so we're good on that, okay? Um, and then the last thing on new business, um, there's some property here that should be on that map still, Lauren. That went back, that the city should look at buying back, which, whatever we pay for it, I'm understanding we get reimbursed, correct?
We'll get it all back because what is owed is street assessments and taxes.
I mean, we'd have to eat the assessments that it works, correct?
Yes, yes.
But it's right, it would have been east of where Taylor Lung used to live, right down where that big culvert is going into the park.
And it's kind of spotty. Here's the range it's in the big part.
At one time, but I don't think there is.
It's this property right here.
Yeah.
Because isn't there.
I thought that was Gales down in there.
No, he's been mowing it.
Yeah, okay.
But it's not his.
It was Gales, it was Gales, he didn't want to pay the specials because they were too high, so his sister bought it from him. His sister paid the specials one year and then decided she wasn't, so she let it go back to the county this year.
Okay.
So for us, if the county was to keep it, they don't play specials anymore.
Sure.
So we're lost either way.
I just think it's kind of a no brainer, I guess we're getting whatever we did back on it, but we could not exclude that. I, I don't blame them for, I mean, there's nothing on there, it's just, well, it's property for a big assessment, but there's no way around what we, we had to do what we had to do then, but I don't think it's a property that the city wants to just get back to the county as well, because we may have to do something there eventually anyway with that drainage into the park, so. And you said there's a main under.
That shoreline, that shoreline comes from the north, runs across here, and then cuts over to this alley and comes down this alley. So there's a shoreline. I would assume that when we did the first project, that the engineers got an easement. And that should be recorded, so I could check at the courthouse if there's an easement on that.
Okay, and that's, um.
Which would be a kind of a relevant, but.
That is goes on auction November nineteenth at one thirty P M. There's a few other ones on there, but, uh, that piece of property?
Yeah.
Do we need someone down there? Can we do that over the phone, or how do we, is that something we need to check into?
Uh.
The last time that we had, when they dropped me down there, that we were.
We were talking about there, yeah.
That corner.
Yeah.
What I was, I was on the council and I went over representing the council. Because if somebody would have been there bidding on it, I would have bid them up to keep the riff out of it. Being, when they started the auction on that property, nobody bid, so I didn't bid either, so it just reverted back to the county. They called for bids three times and nothing happened, and it just went back to the county for lack of a bid. But if somebody would have bid against, you know, then I would have paid and run them up.
So we need someone down there to at least put a bid in?
We probably should, just to keep the problems out of it. I'll go down.
Nineteenth, that's Monday?
Yeah, it's kind of a familiarity, but I will say, that day, there was some property reimbursed.
The keepers are two.
Boy, those two people, those two ladies, they wouldn't give up, they were going against each other some fierce. And I don't know what the story was to it, but finally one did quit.
And there, we, I should tell you guys too, there is a lot A with that too, that's just up for taxes, it didn't have any frontage property on the street assessments. And we're not really quite sure if it's the backside of there's little section. Um, and I'm not sure if it comes up on that, but it's a hundred and six dollars for taxes it's up for.
How much?
Hundred and six dollars. So I guess if need be, you have to put a bid on that one, if they got it listed separate?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
In, in one deal. All right.
Just so we're clear on that.
Okay.
That should be, so you guys got no problem with that? May as well take a motion for it, I guess, if that's.
I'll make that motion.
To put a bid on that, uh, second?
Oh, second.
Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Yeah, let us know on that.
Because actually the money would come back to the city anyway.
That's what we were saying, and I'll just ask you more questions about that, just because I don't understand that, we'll talk about that later.
Okay. Um, I guess that's all I have for new business, unless anyone else got anything else, any of the things we covered or discussed?
Maybe did.
If not, uh, take a look at the bills if you haven't done so, any, uh, questions over there?
Not that's been answered already.
You'll see a few different ones for Ferguson, it was, we had these, the parts to fix these, um, grates. And then weight hats and meters.
Right.
On line.
Who's like that?
Okay.
No questions on that or anything, I'll take a motion to approve bills for October, so we'll move. Lauren, second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, date and time of the next meeting, December second, at seven P M. Anybody got any problems with that, or not sure?
I'm, uh, good going in for bits surgery on November twentieth, so I think I should be able to make it, but.
We're gonna make it tough work?
Uh, yeah.
You're gonna be so happy, though. Larry, you're gonna be so happy.
Cool?
I'll be having one, yeah.
Oh, did you?
Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven forty-three.